Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 Clay County Plan and Zoning Meeting. A few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear seven cases. We will begin with a report from the plan and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, we ask any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board are to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The Commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on June 22nd, 2022, at 3:00 PM in this room. Could we begin tonight with the roll call of attendance?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Marvin Davis.
Present.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Present.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our May 3 meeting as presented?
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
The first case we'll hear tonight is case number June 22-131RZ/P. And could we have staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I would like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
All right. So for our first case, we have Deer Run Acres. As it currently sets, it's 41, roughly 41 acres that is unplanted and zoned R1. The applicant is proposing a three-lot subdivision that ranges from 12 to 15 acres. These three lots will be zoned R1 with an agricultural land preservation. So as shown on the preliminary plat, we have three different utility easements that run through the property. We have a Magellan Pipeline easement that runs there at the northwest corner. We have a Buckeye Pipeline easement that runs along the east side of the property line. And then mostly on the unplanted portion of this property, there is a Northwest Electric easement that runs there. This property is located in Natural Resources Tier in Highway Corridor Overlay District. It is not located within a mile of the city. The intent of the Highway Corridor Overlay District is to support continued agricultural uses in areas beyond near and long-term urban services extensions. Residential uses within the Natural Resources Tier allow for rural density, which is one dwelling unit per 20 acres, or a subdivision of five-plus acre lots, provided a percentage of the land is preserved, in this case, in agricultural land preservation for each of the three lots. This is going to be the surrounding area. Up there in the northwest corner, there's going to be the Smithville Lake reservoir. This is pretty close to 92 and, I believe, E Highway. This is going to be our five rezoning criteria. Staff at Planning and Zoning believes that it does meet this rezoning criterion. For the process of this, we publish this in the Courier Tribune. Property owners with 1,000 feet with each of the property lines are sent certified letters. There's a rezoning sign posted onsite. With outside agency reviews, we reach out to multiple outside agencies, including the Highway Department. They have indicated that the unplanted entrance is adequate. Lots 1 through 3 all have good entrances. Water District Number 9 of Clay County stated that they can provide services for the additional lots once the meters are purchased. Clay County Health Department gave preliminary and final approval, and we reached out to Smithville Fire District, but they have not submitted any comments. Staff has recommended approval with the following conditions, which includes changes to the recording copies of the plat, and that the pond shall be inspected by the NRCS or licensed engineer before the recording of the final plat with any suggested repairs completed. That pond where referred to is on Lot 1. Staff would be happy to answer any other questions the commissioners might have, and the applicant is present.
All right. Very well. Thank you, Shane. Do any board members have questions for staff regarding the case being heard? None? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
My name is Shane Kreese. My address is 13530 Mount Olivet Road, Smithville, Missouri. And I'm the applicant requesting to create these three lots as part of the subdivision. What we've done is tried to make the lots where they're in similar size, if not larger than all the surrounding parcels, so it fits really well within the neighborhood. I believe all the parcels that surround this property, with the exception of one, are subdivided tracks, so it blends in really well. We tried to create the size where it had good continuity and was uniform to the area.
All right. Very well, Shane. You understand the staff's report, or do you have any questions for staff?
No, I fully understand it.
Okay. Very well. Do any of the board members have questions for Mr. Kreese? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the case being heard that supports the application? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the case being heard that opposes the application? With no other discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of Deer Run Acres.
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
I'd like to roll right into the preliminary plat and call for a motion to approve or deny the preliminary plat of Deer Run Acres with the conditions attached in Exhibit A.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number June 22-132F. And could we have a staff's report?
Chairman, I would like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
There we go. This is the final plat for Deer Run Acres. We just addressed the rezoning and the preliminary plat. Staff believes this is compliant with the approved preliminary plat, that it meets Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. We recommend approval with the same following two conditions regarding changes to recording copy of the plat, and then the inspection of the pond on Lot 1. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners might have, and the applicant is also present.
All right. Very well. Thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the case being heard? No questions from the board? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Shane Kreese. My address is 13530 Mount Olivet Road, Smithville, Missouri.
All right. Shane, do you have anything else you'd like to add that would support your application?
No, I think my previous comments are sufficient to support.
All right. And you understand the staff's report?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the final plat of Deer Run Acres with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The third case we'll hear tonight is June 22nd-133RZ/F. And could we hear a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the replat of Lot 2, Morton Acres. The reason it's a rezoning final is it's been platted before. It was platted in 2013. It is currently zoned agricultural. It's outlined in yellow on the screen, and currently, there are no structures on the property. The proposal is to divide it into two lots. One lot would be less than five acres. It would be zoned RUAD, which is our current standard for lots less than five acres. The larger lot is roughly 25, 26 acres. So the small lot is the north portion. This is the property line, that black line, for the four-ish acre lot, four to five acre lot. And then everything else would be included in the 25-acre lot that would be allowed to stay zoned agricultural because it's larger than 20 acres. The small lot would have an agricultural land preservation, and there is a blue line stream that runs along the back, and there'd be a 75-foot setback there. So this is in the urban services tier as identified by the comprehensive plan. It's also within a mile of the city of Excelsior Springs. So typically, the urban services tier is a 10-plus acre lot area. Now, one of the exemptions for that is if a city within a mile of the property would grant a specific exemption. And we worked extensively with Excelsior Springs. We had Zoom calls. We had phone calls. We had emails. And the applicant can back this up, and we finally came to the plan that we're presenting to you today. There were other options, but Excelsior was most comfortable with our current proposal. The intent of this tier is to promote urban development compatible with cities. Staff believes we have done that with working with the city, and we get that exemption from the city, but we also include the agricultural land preservation as well. Here's the surrounding area. You can see Excelsior Springs city limits to the east and then also to the south. Everything in kind of the greenish area is unincorporated Clay County, but it's pretty close to the city limits. This has the same five rezoning criteria. The rezoning criteria says these should be addressed. It does not specifically say these should be met, but staff believes these five criteria have been addressed. This follows that same process where we publish it in the Courier Tribune. We sent a total of 21 certified letters. We posted a rezoning site, and this first starts at the Planning and Zoning Commission, who makes a recommendation to County Commission, and then County Commission votes to approve or deny. If approved, we would get the recording copies of the plat and record those, which would make the subdivision official. The applicant received all their outside agency approvals. A case review was sent to the Excelsior Springs Fire District, but we did not get comments. And as I stated earlier, the city granted the exemption to going less than 10 acres. Staff's recommendation is approval with two conditions. It's some changes to the recording copies of the plat, and it's the pond shall be inspected by NRCS or licensed engineer before the recording of the final plat. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the case being heard? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Ronald Morton, 25219 Merrill Road, Excelsior Springs, Missouri.
Mr. Morton, do you have anything that you would like to present that supports your application?
Nothing other than we tried to meet all the criteria that the county did, and as Kip indicated, we had pretty extensive meetings to get that done.
And you understand and agree with the staff's report and recommendations?
Yes.
All right. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant?
If I'm looking at the map correctly, just to the east, are those lots right around 2 to 3 acres?
Yes. Actually, I live in the south portion, second lot from the proposed, and it's 4.5. So I think they are anywhere from, I think the smallest is about 2 and 1/2, and I think ours is the largest at 4.5.
Okay. Just making sure I was looking at the right track there. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, Mr. Morton. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of the replat of Lot 2 of Morton Acres.
I'll move to approve.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries.
Can we roll right into the final plat?
Yes, sir. No additional report from staff.
All right. I think we can go ahead and roll right into the final plat, and I would call for a motion to approve the final plat of replat, Lot 2 of Morton Acres, with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve with condition.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number June 22-134CUP. And could we have a staff's report?
Yes, Chairman. We'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is a request for a cell tower. It's titled Carney East. Got the subject property pulled up on the screen. It is currently unplatted, zoned agricultural. It includes a single-family home and an accessory structure. It's located in the urban services tier and located within a mile of the city of Carney. The proposal is a request for a conditional use permit, as the Land Development Code requires a conditional use permit for cell towers that are located in agricultural zoning. The request is for a 155-foot tower. That does include, I think it's either a five or six-foot lightning rod on top of the tower. The applicant indicates that no marking or lighting will be required. The county would require fencing and a lock gate. Landscaping will be required around the base of the cell tower, and the current code requires that it be set back at least 100% of the height of the tower from each property line. So in this case, it has to be at least a minimum of 155 feet setback from the property lines. As I stated, this is in the urban services tier within a mile of Carney. A case review was sent to the city of Carney, and no comments were received as of today. The intent is to promote urban development compatible with cities. The non-residential uses in this tier include recreation, limited commercial, and industrial, consistent with the long-range growth plans of adjoining cities. Here's a look at the surrounding area. So again, the kind of light shaded gray area is city of Carney. So you see to the south, there's some city of Carney, and then there's a pretty densely packed subdivision to the north and west. It's city of Carney. In addition, subdivision to the west as well. Everything in color is unincorporated Clay County. This is Jesse James Farm Road and 140th, so we are basically southeast of 92 and the city of Carney. The conditional use permit has different criteria than a rezoning. Per the Land Development Code, these conditional use permit criteria must be met. Those were included in the transmittal, posted on the website. I'm not going to go through each individually, but they were included with the report sent to the commissioners and posted on the website. This followed the same process, which included publishing it in the Courier Tribune. We sent a total of 24 certified letters, posted a sign onsite, and then this follows the same process with the Planning and Zoning Commission, then on to County Commission for it to be approved or denied. Either way, whether it's approved or denied, the County Commission will issue a resolution, either approving or denying it. Now, the unique thing about cell towers is the state of Missouri has state statutes that deal with cell towers. So those were added in their full detail to the staff report, which was also posted on the website. I just wanted to go over a few of what I considered the highlights. The state statute does not allow the county to put a time limit on a conditional use permit. Typically, if we were hearing a conditional use permit, staff would recommend that it's good for five, or 10, or 15 years. In this case, the state says we can't do that. In addition, our Land Development Code states that we should require a bond for the tower in case something would happen to the tower where the county could access that bond or letter of credit to fix the tower. In this case, the state basically says if that's not our normal habit, which it hasn't been, that we cannot require that bond or letter of credit. In addition, the state statute also says we cannot evaluate this application based on the availability of other potential locations. And then also the state statutes indicates that the county cannot reject an application in whole or part based on perceived or alleged environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. So just want to point that out. As I stated, the entire state statute's part of the staff report, but those were the things that stuck out to staff. Outside agency approval. Each conditional use permit's a little bit different. For Highway Department, a driveway permit would be required, and they state that the entrance location is acceptable. There are no restroom facilities with this. The Public Health Center will be required to approve this if this is approved when the applicant applies for a building permit. There is no water in this plan, and as I stated earlier, a case review was sent to the city of Carney, and no comments were received. Also, a case review was sent to the Fire District with no comments. Planning and zoning is recommending approval with eight conditions. Highlight a couple of those conditions include a structural inspection every two years, FAA approval before a building permit is issued, the fencing with the lock gate that we discussed, landscaping, security signs, and that they meet that minimum setback. Staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. It kind of appears to me the state statutes that pertain to commercial cell towers that went into effect in August of 2014, they kind of cover all the bases and trump any county policies or regulations.
That's my understanding, and it kind of doesn't, I don't want to say handcuffed, but it limits, limits the reasons a jurisdiction can deny a cell tower application.
Says we can't deny it, right? Does it say we have to approve it?
Say that first part again.
If no one moves to approve on this, what happens? I'm just curious.
If we go through the discussion and then no commissioner makes a motion to approve, I would rely on county council for that one. I don't know if the, I will say that the state statute says, and I don't have it exactly in front of me, but I think it's 120-day window the county has to act on this. So if the county doesn't act, then it's automatically approved if we don't meet that timeline. I don't know, Andy, if you have anything to add to that?
If there's no motion made, then it obviously can't be approved. If you don't take any action, and 120 days pass, it's automatically approved. If you recommend denial or recommend approval, then it's going to go to the commission for them to consider at their next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions from the board members for staff? Would the applicant or the applicant's representative step up to the podium, please, state your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Glenn Clocky, I am with Network Real Estate. We represent AT&amp;T in this issue, this issue. My address is 5055 Highway N, St. Charles, Missouri. So what we're asking for tonight is, we're, AT&amp;T wants to put a new 150-foot monopole with a five-foot lightning arrester, which is basically on the top of the tower. The lease area that we're looking at is 100 foot by 100 foot. It will be fenced with a six-foot fence with a locking gate. Everything that's associated with this tower will be inside that, that lease area at 100 foot by 100 foot. There will be no guy wires coming up this tower, so everything is self-contained, all the equipment, all the tower and everything. The access for this tower will come off of northeast 140th Street. There'll be a 12-foot gravel road from 140th Street going back to the tower. Well, it was the last slide to show that, where we'll go to that. As he mentioned, there will be, lighting is not required, we've already checked on this tower. We will get final FAA approval once we get through the approval process with the county. This particular tower is designed to cover the east side of the city of Carney, huge area. In Clay County, that AT&amp;T is absent of coverage, it's a big hole that they have. It's, it's also designed to really improve coverage on Highway 92, Highway 33, the school, that, that part of town. And it also will vastly increase the 911 service that you don't have now. These towers all get built into the 911 network. Once they're built, we work with the fire departments to show, to give them the, the coverage that this tower will cover. And pretty much, that's, that's in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. And we also, we did note, take note that they want landscaping. We will get with the, with the county and see what kind of landscaping they want around the base, and we will do whatever they want.
All right, Mr. Clocky, you understand the staff's report and the
I do.
Any conditions they've attached to the
I do.
Application?
Yes.
Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Yes, sir?
Nathan TV Ball, 14013, Jesse James Farm Road, Carney, Missouri.
Yes, sir.
My concerns are, first of all, that it could affect the property value of my property. I look at a diagram here that you had up there earlier. With it being right on the property line, I'd like to get a survey, first of all. And I'm wondering if it could affect the stability and strength of my, of mine and my neighbors' fences. In the diagram, it shows a couple of trees being removed, one being the only tree, shade tree on my property on the east side. So that is a concern. Also, my wife and I own a small hobby farm. We have several animals on our property that we think maybe the traffic could possibly affect their temperament also. My concern with the road being so close to the fence, like I said, affecting the strength of the fence. If it is approved, will there, will there be a gate on the end of the drive so that pedestrians can't just drive up the gravel road to view? And, you know, it's a privacy thing also. But those are, those are my main concerns.
All right, thank you. We will have, we'll let the applicant respond to the public participation when we're done here. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that opposes? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is Curtis Ross, and I live at 14105 Jesse James Farm Road in Carney. My property is, joins the property in question. My wife and I, since we started looking at this a couple of weeks ago after we got the certified letter, have come quite concerned with, many of the concerns that Nathan expressed, but more so with the placement of the tower being so close to our home. If I understand the diagrams and the measurements, it has to be at least 155 feet from my property line. My house is only 142 feet from my property line, so the tower will be within 300 feet of my home. Had a conversation with Mr. Jones a couple hours ago, and was only then made aware of some of the state statutes and the fact that a lot of what my concerns are may be negated by the state statutes, but I'm going to mention them anyways. We're, we're concerned, again, we've lived there for 37 years. We're concerned about our view, our impeded view, that has been unimpeded for the 37 years that we've been there. This is going to be a 155-foot tower, and I don't think anybody wants to see that sticking out your back window or your back deck, being only 297 feet from your back door. We're concerned about the associated noise and dust during construction and any emergency and ongoing maintenance. We're concerned about any potential safety issue concerning potentially increased lightning during storms by having such a tall, a tall tower that close to our home. One of the issues I know that I was told is not an issue per the state statute is potential severe health issues as a result with the EMF and RF transmissions coming off of the tower. And then, as Nathan mentioned, we're very concerned about our property values and any potential environmental issues as a result of the tower. We'd asked the question, why was this location selected? And in the applicant's submission, they said that their search ring analysis proved that this was the most suitable site. It was mentioned earlier that, you know, we're in somewhat of a rural area, we have hundreds of acres, if not thousands of acres of free, empty, I shouldn't call it empty, but farmland. But there seems to me that there should be a suitable site available that this tower could go that wouldn't cause some of the problems that we're speaking to tonight. So I would say those are the primary concerns I've got, but primarily the health concerns, even though the state may negate that. But quite honestly, my wife and I live in 300 feet away from a tower. Don't necessarily want to be collateral damage as a result of the state saying it's really a non-issue. So, that would be our concerns.
Thank you, Curtis.
You bet.
Yeah. Anyone else who would like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
And Chairman, can I mention something while she comes up? I failed to mention that Mr. Ross submitted a letter after the staff report went out. It was emailed to the Planning and Zoning Commission members and posted on the website. And then Mr. Clocky submitted a study on property values that was submitted afterwards that was also sent to the, to the members and posted on the website.
All right, go ahead.
My name is Jennifer Julian, 13901 Jesse James Farm Road, Carney, Missouri. My husband and I have lived here for 29 years. As you can tell by looking at me, I suffer from an autoimmune disease. I know the state is now going to negate, but I would at least like them to consider the possibilities. The National, excuse me, United States National Toxicology Program, usntp.gov, if you'd like to fact-check, comprised of the National Health Institute headed by Fauci, the Centers for Disease Control, the FDA, and the World Health Organization. None of their combined over 800 studies have included any specific testing on humans. It has all been done on lab animals. This has been on cell towers ranging from G2 to the present G5. The only admittance they will give is that, and I quote, "They acknowledge damage to immune systems, damage to eyes and skin on studies, and this is only on the animals in the lab." Not to mention the environmental effects proven to disrupt the earth's natural magnetic fields. Everybody has seen the birds. It will affect the bees, it will affect the pollination. This is an area where they grow crops and raise cattle. We move there for peace and prosperity. We like to be close to town, but not in town. There are thousands of possible alternative locations. Perhaps one could be at the Clay County Municipal Airport. I would just like respectfully to ask for the consideration, even if it may be negated by state statutes. And I would like to leave you with one final quote. You can fact-check this at cancer.org, American Cancer Society. And I quote, "No official position or statement regarding RF slash EMF waves causing tumorous cancer or other serious health effects, included but not limited to harm to skin, eyes, and immune system." End quote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment or oppose? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lacey Weemhold, I live at 20017 Northeast 140th Street. I live directly across the street from the proposed site. I do oppose it, I think it's a huge ISO, I moved to the country from the city. I have no problem with the 911 service, I have no problem with cellphone service. All of my neighbors down the road are, they have no issues. I have a lot of concerns with the same thing, all these people said much better than I can say, that the state says this shouldn't be a concern. There are concerns with my property value. There have been studies that it could affect your property value in between 2% and 20% in some studies. Again, I don't have all the details as my friends here have, but that's a concern. And then my health concerns for the animals, for the people in such a close proximity of homes. I mean, I'm literally looking at a 16-story tower outside my front door. It's an ISO, and I don't want it in my neighborhood. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to? Yes, sir?
My name's Bob Julian, 13901 Jesse James Farm Road. Been here for 29 years. Like I say, there's a lot of other open ground, not in a neighborhood, to put this in a neighborhood. And with everybody else, the property values, like I say, up to 20%, you know, that, that's a big hit for anybody. And, you know, like I say, what's the payout to this, this individual that he's making to run everybody's property values down for that? And that's, 20% is a big hit, and, you know, we're going to get it reassessed if something happens and drop, drop our taxes, you know? And like they said, I have no problem with cell service. There is no problem whatsoever up there. It's, it's all good and clear, and I've never heard of anybody having a problem with it. Say, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Julian. I think Kip mentioned that we did receive a certified appraisal from a simmer tower and simmer setting down on 291 Highway, Coogingham Road area, be just south and west of this tower. It's on, is it, it's on the P&amp;Z website, is that right?
It is.
And it's a, was completed by a certified commercial appraiser. And if you're concerned about your property values, I would encourage you to, to review that, that appraisal report. If the applicant would like to step back up to the podium, and if you want to reply to any of the comments from the public, you're welcome to it.
Yes, thank you, I can, I want to reply to a couple of them. As far as the noise coming from a tower, these towers make no noise. The only noise that is, that would be made, there's electronic equipment at the base of the towers. It makes a very slight humming, there's zero noise that comes off the tower. The road along the gentleman's fence, his fence won't be touched. If there's an issue with the trees, they, they won't remove trees off the contiguous property line. They, they just don't do that. If that's an issue, we'll, we'll move that road over to, to get away from that. We're not going to, we're not going to disrupt somebody's fence line. We could, we'll just talk to the planner and figure something out there. And as far as the lightning, the reason that, that a tower has a lightning rod on it is that if a tower gets hit, it, it hits that lightning rod at the top of the tower. There are ground rods that run, there's probably six ground rods that run down the tower and to a huge ground ring in the ground. It, it contains the lightning. It doesn't, the reason it's on there is that the tower doesn't get damaged. So it really kind of contains the lightning. They do, you know, in the mountains, I used to live in Colorado, they used to get hit by lightning all the time in the mountains. That, those lightning rods work very well. Pretty much, that's it. I mean, as far as the maintenance of these towers, once a tower is built, this tower will take about six weeks to build from beginning to end. They go up pretty quick. Once it's built, you will see a maintenance truck come out there maybe once every two months. If the tower is performing as it's supposed to, all these towers are monitored back at the AT&amp;T switch, so they know what these towers are doing 24/7. If it's, if it's performing the way it's supposed to, you won't see anybody. If it performs well for six months, you won't see anybody out there. The only time they will send somebody out there is if they get a, an alarm that they need to come out and tweak something. And they will come out with a, probably a car or SUV. That's the biggest thing that will come out there once it's, it's constructed.
All right, well, you know, I think the, your application meets the county's Land Development Code. It complies with the comprehensive plan. And what I would empathize with Mr. Ross, that he's going to sit on the back porch of his house and be less than 300 feet away from a tower. The tower appears to be on the far western edge of a vast piece of agricultural property. In consideration of the, the property immediately to the west of this tower, be relocated 200 or 300 or 400 feet further east out of courtesy and respect to the adjoining property owners?
Here's the thing, with the location and, and the, the location is ultimately chosen to where we get, where we put a tower, is based on several things. AT&amp;T gives us what they call a search ring. The search ring was a quarter-mile round. Because they, because these, these networks are getting, are becoming so mature that there's not a lot of ability to move it. So we gave them several locations to look at. A lot of things have to happen, it has to be constructable. We have to, have to have a property owner that will enter into a lease with us, that's, you know, we don't twist anybody's arm. You know, we, we look for, for a location that'll comply with the county or whatever code we're dealing with. And then we, we give that back to the engineers. For instance, the property next to this, we looked at, AT&amp;T did not like it. They, they tell us this is the location that we need the tower to go because of how the coverage objectives that they're trying to meet. This tower relates to, there's seven other towers around this that it talks to. So moving a tower, just moving it over, you know, whatever feet is, it, you know, it becomes problematic for their network.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it, I'm not saying that, you know, we looked at a lot of locations before we landed on this one.
Well, I would empathize with Mr. Ross and the other owners, but the state's kind of on your all's side. And at the same time, you're playing by the rules and complying with the ODC and the, and the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant?
How many other sites did you look at? As far as, if you looked at a site, AT&amp;T said that they wanted it, and you went to that owner of that site, and they, they didn't want it on their property, how many other sites did you actually look at?
We don't, we don't give AT&amp;T a location. I, I typically talk to the property owners first. I, I typically talk to the property owners first. I won't say, you know, look at this piece of land, and then they like it and say, then I say, okay, you can't have it because the property owner doesn't want to do a, do a deal with us. We looked at probably about three or four different locations that we turned in to them. The, the two that they were considering was, like I said, there was one right next to this one. The reason they didn't do that, and it was another, it was very similar to this, it was about 11, 12 acres. There was a substation that sits right to the, I think to the east of it. They were concerned about that substation being not too close for them, but too close for the substation. So they, you know, we, they chose this location.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Are we done with public participation?
Yeah, I would probably ask maybe one more time, but it's up to you.
All right. Well, let's see, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment that opposes the application?
And I think we, yeah, probably limit it to folks that haven't spoken yet.
All right. We need to stay, the topic needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard, please.
Well, this is all new to me. I never come down.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Charlotte Barr. I live at 14002 Jesse James Farm Road. I own the house next door at 14016 Jesse James Farm Road. And I am very concerned about the health issues. And I don't think the fellow talking even addressed that to us. And I would like to know how close he lives to a tower, and would he want one planted in front of his house? And I'm very unhappy. I pay a lot of taxes, and I obey all the laws, and I've been in Clay County all my life. My ancestors helped found this county, and I am not happy that we can be paying taxes, upkeeping our properties, trying to be good citizens. And all of a sudden, a leasing comes in, and because they're AT&amp;T, they can tell us what we can and cannot do with our property. I'm not happy.
Okay.
And I don't know how the state can tie our hands when we have our own property.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to? Yep?
My name is Natalie Benner. Our address is 20401 Northeast 140th Street. We are across the street from where the tower is supposed to be placed. We're not happy with having a tower. We live in the country to be in the country, away from all the gadgets that everybody has. We have no problem with 911. I've had AT&amp;T service for probably 25 years, have never had a problem with it at our house. So I don't know why he said that. He also stated that he had a little bit of noise. Well, a little bit of noise to him might be completely different to all of us when we're out there living in it. And I don't know if he would wanna have a tower in his backyard. I kinda feel like we weren't presented everything before we even came here, because we didn't even know how tall the tower was. And maybe that's my fault, because I didn't look enough at the letter to know that I needed to go to a website to find that. I would think that that would be something you guys would present to us, so we actually knew what we were discussing before we came tonight. I have health issues. My kids, I don't want them growing up. I don't wanna have, you know, grandkids to have problems from living around a cell tower. If I chose to live around a cell tower, I would, you know, that's different. But I've lived there for 31 years with no cell tower, and I don't need it. And I don't need my cellphone that bad. If I had to have a tower, I would do without a cellphone. So I hope that you take our concerns and deny his ask, ask his permission for the permit, because it's not what we want. We live in the country, and the country's groomed to us. I understand that, but that's not what we want for our lives.
All right. Very well. Thank you. Yep. Would you like to comment, Mr. Clark?
I get asked that all the time about if I would like a cell tower across from my house. I have a cell tower across from my house. You know, it's not, this isn't personal for me. This is, you know, this is what we're hired to do. I walk out my front door, there's a 250-foot tower in the field next door. You know, it's just, it's part of progress. I understand the apprehensions with, with people. I understand that it, you know, it's visual. I, I get that 100%. I've been doing this for 25 years. I understand that. As far as the, the, the frequencies that come off of these towers, the FCC controls these frequencies. The FCC gives every carrier the frequencies they're allowed to broadcast within. They give Verizon, they give T-Mobile. What, what we're allowed to say is we are well within the FCC's requirements, which we are, which the FCC says, okay, these frequencies, they do studies, years of studies, they, you know, they say they're safe, they've been around for, for decades. And every carrier is well within the FCC regulations, or they would get fined big money. So yes, I mean, it's, it's, I get it, I understand it. It's just these locations are picked by the carriers. It has nothing to do with AT&amp;T. I've done work for everybody. It's just, you know, it's, it's, they're trying to provide a service not for the person that lives next to it. They're trying to provide a service that's, that is, covers a large area. The roads, the, you know, in-building coverage, things like that, that they do need. They wouldn't put up a tower. These towers cost them a million dollars to build. They wouldn't spend that kind of money if they didn't, if they didn't need it. You know, I mean, it's, it's their network, and they're trying to improve it.
All right. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I would certainly empathize with the adjacent property owners and the comments that we've heard this evening. I mean, the facts are that the applicant complies with the county's land development code, and the applicant is complying with the county's comprehensive plan. And, you know, these are voluntary positions for all of us. Don't, don't think we enjoy this.
Chairman, may I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
I just have to address the, the information that was given. So I'm very proud that we have an open door policy at planning and zoning. So if any citizen wants information with planning and zoning, that door is open eight to five, Monday through Friday. That phone is answered eight to five. So please use us. Reach out to us. We're not just there for applicants. We're there for people that wanna oppose cases. So my staff, I'm proud of my staff, and we do our best to get back to everybody in a timely manner, and we are there, and we are county employees, and you should use us. Thank you.
So with...
Can I ask him one question?
I think we've closed it. You can ask me after the meeting or at the office. We've closed it for public comment.
I was a cranky gentleman applying for the tower.
I think we've already closed the public comment, please. Well, no further discussion, and based on the facts that the applicant's complying with the land development code and the county's comprehensive plan, I would call for a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the 155-foot commercial communication tower with the conditions attached as are set out in Exhibit A. So there's no motions of this, it dies, and that's it for now?
Yeah, I would say if there's no motion, I, I don't know what, at what point, we just move on to the next case, Andy?
Yep.
Yeah, we just move on to the next case, and it would, it would sit.
Chairman, would we ahead, would we be ahead to table it for a month?
Yes, but, you know, if we, we've got 120 days, and we're, the clock's ticking, and if we table it for a month and let the adjoining property owners gather more information, and we could rehear the case at our, at our July meeting. If I have a motion to table the, the present case being heard for the time being?
Motion to table.
I'll second.
Very well. Could I have a roll call vote?
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rotis.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
So the motion to table the next month meeting was carried.
Could I have a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the third plat of Prairie Field subdivision at the northeast corner of 112th and Plattsburgh Road. Currently, this section is unplatted. It was rezoned to Residential Services District multifamily, and the rezoning at PUD, which is the overall plan, were approved in February of 2019. The first and second plats are nearing completion. The first plat is a, so if you remember, this subdivision was roughly 300 lots. And Shane, will you go ask them to move, or somebody ask them to move downstairs? So the original, roughly 300 lots, it's a combination of a few duplexes, which have not been constructed yet, single-family homes, and then villas, which are also single-family, but their maintenance provided. Here's a diagram showing the third plat. I'll pull up the aerial when we're done to give you a better idea. But this, this plat includes 46 total lots, four tracks, including track, track I, which includes the community pool, two temporary sediment basins. One of the changes was this street right here, which is Clover Street. In the original PUD, this was to be a through street. It was changed with this plat to become a cul-de-sac. The, the way this works is each time, 60 days before they present a final plat, they have to submit construction plans, which includes sanitary sewer, street water, erosion, sediment control, grading plans, and all those are sent to the county on-call engineer. In this case, there was some back and forth between the two engineers, and those plans were approved by the county on-call engineer. Here's the surrounding area. It abuts I-35, real close to Liberty City limits. This is 112th Street, Plattsburgh Road, Private Garden subdivision to the west. Approval criteria for final plat basically says it should be approved if it complies with the preliminary plat. Now, originally, this third plat was to consist of 44 lots. There is a new engineer working on the rest of the phases of Prairie Field, and with that change, they moved some things around. It's my understanding that some of the stormwater for the future plats wasn't, weren't sized properly, so those are gonna have to be enlarged. And we're gonna lose some lots, or the developer's gonna lose some lots in the future phases. So the number of lots is not gonna increase, even though this phase technically is increasing by two lots. The process, this is a little bit different. The approval of the final plat, this will go to county commission if approved. At that point, the developer installs the infrastructure. The agencies inspect and approve the infrastructure. Once that infrastructure is approved, the developer can record the final plat and sell lots. The developer has a two, two-year maintenance period for the infrastructure, where a letter of credit is required in case there are repairs that the county can draw on that letter of credit if the developer refuses to do the repairs. At that point, the county accepts the infrastructure into the system. Staff's recommendation is approval with 14 conditions. Just highlighted a couple of the conditions here, which includes a third-party inspector on-site during the infrastructure installation. That is to be paid by the developer. The HOA is responsible for the stormwater infrastructure, and we talked about how Clover Street has changed. And it's been brought to our attention that there's a plaque clay easement on the property that's not noted on the plat, so we're gonna research that and include it on the plat as needed. I'm gonna go to the aerial image to give you a better idea of where this is. And then I do wanna talk about the biggest, biggest issue with any subdivision this size is always the stormwater and the sediment control. So the developer, in this case, has included two temporary sediment basins with this plat. We've talked quite a bit with the developer about concerns with sediment control. You know, I think we've, we've made improvements in that. You can see, this is the third plat here. This is the first plat that's being built now, and the second plat to the south. So the third plat sits on the extension of 115th Street. I'm gonna take off the zoning just so you can see the layout a little bit better, because the way the stormwater and the, the, engineer may correct me, but the way I understand this is there's gonna be two sediment basins on two of the tracks, and I'll wait for this to update. But there's gonna be roughly one in this area and one in this area that would catch the sediment for the third plat before it would make it into this original basin that was included in the first plat. It's also my understanding the developer has agreed to install the erosion and sediment control as step one, get those sediment basins installed as step two, and wait until those sediment basins are installed before they disturb the rest of this phase. So that way, the sediment basins can be in place, catch that sediment before it ever makes, makes it into this basin, and then goes across Plattsburgh Road. So that's kind of a brief summary. I do wanna emphasize that the overall plan was approved with the rezoning and the PUD plan. So this is just kinda coming back, allowing them to do their third plat. I would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
All right. Thank you, Kip. So these, the two new sediment basins, they're going kind of in this track H and track F, is that...
Yeah, let me pull up another document that's probably gonna be better to see it. Hopefully, this'll work. So here's the two basins, one here and one here.
Okay.
Let me see if there's a better... Track H, it's my understanding, track H right here and track F.
Okay. So these will be sediment basins that will ultimately drain into the detention basin that was built as part of track one?
Yes, and the goal is to catch all that before it gets there.
Okay.
Now, there is a, a pipe here that's surrounded by riprap that does catch some sediment. This, this has been a, and I think the developer will agree, it's been a thorn in my side that I don't think this has done a good enough job of keeping the sediment in this area.
All right. All right, thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the application being heard?
Yeah, what's, what's the size of track H and F, Kip? Do we know?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Size of track H and track F?
Uh, I'll find it later. So I think I put that in the staff report, so let me find the staff report.
126,000 feet.
Yeah, was it 126,000 square feet total for all the open space?
Well, there's a track one on this plat, though. That's, that's quite a bit of it, I would guess.
It is. I can, let me, give me a minute, let me research that, and I'll get back with you. I can, let me, give me a minute, let me research that, and I'll get back with you. And I'm going to have your answer right here, I think. So tract H is 30,000 square feet. Tract F is 32,000 square feet, so a little bit, about three-quarters of an acre? Am I math right?
Yeah.
Acre and a half, cool.
And I want to say the overall tract is 18.25 acres, the whole third plat.
Yeah. Do you have, any board members have any other questions for staff? If the applicant or his representative step up to the podium, please?
I'm Robert Sanders. I live 22420 Northeast 112th Street. And we developed what is the first and second plat at Prairie Field. Started out as a pretty rough piece of farm ground, and I think it's turned into something pretty nice for Clay County. We'd like to continue that.
Mr. Sanders, do you understand the staff's report, and do you have any questions?
I do have a question on condition number five. It's talking about walking trails and landscaping. In tract H and F, we've got temporary detention basins to catch siltation. So there really can't be anything done until those homes are built. So I'd like to see that waived, because it said it had to be done prior to final plat approval. And there are no walking trails in this plat, so I'd like to see that removed.
You're saying that the trails would be built after the sediment basins, or after it's built out?
There's no trails in this plat. We put trails in the previous two plats.
Yeah, and I'll be honest Chairman, I just, we just left that in because I was afraid we were missing some trails. So I, my opinion is that doesn't create an issue.
Well, it does say tract improvements on number five, though. I think, more than anything, Bob, for me, it's the sediment. And sediment ponds need to be done prior, really, to anything else. And I want to make sure that that's being done, because.
No, I agree, that's the first thing that needs to be done.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to say that we won't do landscaping in there, but it's going to be impossible if it's a siltation basin.
Yeah.
Which you're proposing, put up your erosion control?
That'd be the first thing that happens.
And construct sediment ponds, and then start the lots after that? Utility improvements, what have you?
Everything that drains off this portion, this plat, goes down through that detention basin. Everything. And the way I see it, and I may be incorrect, but the detention basin is catching the huge majority of any sediment that comes through. I know that the water that goes on through is discolored, but the openings to get through into that vertical pipe are pretty small. And there's a lot of grass and waterways that it has to go through at this point. Now, there was a small section on the first plat that had joined Plattsburgh Road that didn't go into that detention basin. And we had some rock checks and some silt fences that we may have had a problem or two with. But that's pretty well established, and they finished sprinklers in that area this week. And it should be in good shape.
All right, any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders.
And Chairman, may I add something?
You bet.
I don't think we put it as a condition, Marvin. But if you wanted to add a condition, that the sediment basins be constructed, I think that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, I think we need to add it as a condition. Can't be too safe here. I mean, you know, I think we can all agree, if you live over there, and of course, Bob, you know, I live across the street as well, and I've got many videos of a lot of sediment coming over silt fences, coming through the first pipe, where the pipe wasn't even in at that point, coming into the pond over in Private Gardens. And I can't walk out this door without at least requiring that, or I probably can't go back to my neighborhood.
No, I don't disagree.
Yeah. So yes.
And I think it can be as easy as installation of erosion control and sediment, two temporary sediment basins are, shall be required before any other infrastructure is installed.
It's really, that's describing the top of page four, but we might move it down into the exhibits and make it more binding. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the case being heard that supports the application? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Very well, is there any other discussion the board members may have? I think we're in agreement to add an additional item to the attachments, Kip, is the erosion, the erosion control measures, i.e. the silt fence and sediment basins will be in place prior to the commencing construction in Phase Three?
Yeah, if that's what the commission decides to do, I'd prefer a separate motion. And then if that's approved, then we'll go on to voting on the case.
All right. So you want a motion to add an item to the?
I suppose you can do it together, a motion to add that condition with approval.
All right.
I think that's how we did it last time.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Prairie Field, third plat, with the conditions attached, set out in Exhibit A, including an additional item that addresses the erosion control and sediment basins of Track Three.
I will second that.
So I called for a motion, you want to first it?
Oh, you called for the, okay.
I thought you motioned.
I'll move to approve.
All right. Could I have a second?
Second.
Very well, could I have roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approved with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approved with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approved with conditions.
Mike Brinkley.
Approved with conditions.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approved with conditions.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number June 22-136F. And could we have a staff's report?
Chairman, I would like to add the staff report to the official record.
So be it.
This is the final plat for Luciana Point. This property is currently unplatted and zoned R5. The rezoning and preliminary plat were approved back in January by the County Commission. The proposed subdivision is 18 total lots. There would be a total of four ponds on the property, one new basin will be installed. And the construction plan submitted by the applicant has been approved by the county on-call engineer. This is the surrounding area, so this property is at the corner of H Highway and Stockdale. It's the old Liberty Hills Golf Course. So for the approval criteria on this, the final plat may be approved by the County Commission if they determine that the final plat complies with the approved preliminary plat, includes all corrections and conditions imposed by the County Commission during their approval of the preliminary plat. So essentially, as long as they are, to me, that's as long as they align with each other. So how this process works is a little bit different than a regular minor subdivision. Very similar to the case previously. The process goes, approval by, the final plat gets approved by the County Commission. Developer will then install the infrastructure. The proper agencies will inspect and approve the infrastructure. Once that is approved, the developer can record the final plat and begin selling lots. There will be two-year maintenance period for the infrastructure. A letter of credit is required. Then after the two years, the county highway department will look at the quality of the roads, and then would accept the infrastructure into the roadway system. So with the, we're recommending approval with 14 conditions. We're looking at some of the highlighted ones up here on the screen. Third-party inspector on the site during infrastructure installation paid by the developer. HOA is responsible for stormwater infrastructure. All lots with frontage on interior streets shall have access from that interior street rather than H Highway or Stockdale Road. Research, they're going to have, or, excuse me, research and add Liberty Hills sewer easement as needed. So they're currently looking at proper research on the Liberty Hills sewer lines that are possibly on this property. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners might have, and the applicants are also present.
All right, thank you Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the case being heard? If the applicant's present or representative, would you step up to the podium, please?
Robert DeLa Fuente with Star Development, 244 West Mill in Liberty, Missouri.
Robert, do you have anything that you'd like to add or present that supports your application?
Nothing to add, just ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you understand and agree with the staff's reports and their conditions in the exhibit?
Yes, we do.
Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Yes ma'am?
Summer O'Hara, 9904 Liberty Hills Drive. I do not support, or not support this, I just have a question. What is the sewer going to be? Is this going to be private septic systems? Or is this going to be a sewer system already connected to the HOAs in the area?
I believe, staff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe these will be individual septic systems.
That is correct.
Okay, that is my issue, because I butt up to the property, and I am worried about runoff to my property from a development standpoint. But I guess that will be the next meeting?
Well, these will be new septic systems that will be approved by the Clay County Public Health Center. So that's, you know, all the infrastructure details were kind of discussed with the rezoning and preliminary plat, which was the first set of meetings. But they, these lot sizes meet the minimum acreage to be allowed a septic system, so.
Oh, yes. No, I'm for that septic system, that's wonderful. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Yes ma'am?
I don't, I neither support nor.
Could you state?
I'm kind of like you. My name is Sue Quigley, I live at 9809 Russell Circle, I live up there. Except for the loss of our little country feel. I don't know if this is where I should ask this, but I'm concerned about Stockdale Road that runs up to 69, which is getting more and more traffic, and the road is deteriorating constantly. And I don't know if this is where we bring that up.
Would staff want to comment on that, please?
Yeah, so I would tell you, best avenue is to contact the highway department if it's about the condition of the road. You know, sometimes when we do a development like this, improvements are required of the developer. I don't, Terry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any improvements to Stockdale were requested in this case, correct?
That's correct.
So I would call highway department, 816-407-3300. Or you can call my office. It is a county, county highway department.
I think you've got H Highway running east and west, which is state highway, and then Stockdale Road's going to be county, so. Is there anyone else that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone that would like to comment that opposes the application? Yes, sir?
Larry Hurlinger, I live at 20211 Highway H. I'm on the bottom right-hand corner, across from the proposed project. I have a couple of concerns. One of them is, is if you blow that picture up a little bigger, that's where this blue circle is. I have a few concerns, but I think one of them, he's going to tell me to talk to the power company. Over the last several years, the power issue, I'm concerned adding more homes in here. The power's going out drastically, more and more every day. Adding more homes, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but the power is like going off four, five, six times a day now, and we're not even in the heat of the summer yet. So that's an issue. See that brown area right there on the curve of the road? I'm concerned that when they start building homes on Lot 18 and 17, that they're going to change the contour of the property, which is going to cause runoff to come into that brown area. Can I leave the podium here real quick?
Sure.
I want to show you something, because you guys don't live there. Because you guys don't live there, you won't notice, but right here, there's a culvert. And all the water accumulates right now, right in here, and it comes underneath the road, and it runs right under here, and then all the water comes across right here, which when we bought the property, it was never disclosed, it was never disclosed to us about it. When we get these really big rainstorms, that we do get several of them here, I'm telling you, the water right in that area right there is, I'm talking 30 inches deep during a rainstorm. So I'm concerned that when they change the slope and they grade that property there, that it's going to kick all that more water this way. So something needs to be done, restrictions need to be put on, that they don't, they don't cause more water coming this way. And I'm afraid they're going to tell, oh, that's MoDOT. MoDOT's in charge of that right there. So it's not part of their property, part of their problem. And it's every year, it's not just once in a while. And then that brings up the septic system. Whoever is in charge of your septic system, when we bought our house, they had to replace it. Whoever's in charge of it said, oh, you guys got to put your septic system right there. That's a whole nother issue. Why would you put a septic system where you get the most water during a rainstorm? It's the most idiotic, stupid thing in the world. I'm a plumber, and it floods our septic system, and that stupid alarm goes off all the time. That guy should lose his job. But I got to listen to it for four or five days every time it rains. So that's a concern with me. And then you guys said no entrances from on H Highway to these lots here? No driveways?
I think it's if there's any interior streets, that the access to those lots would be through the interior streets. Otherwise, the access would be off of the state highway or Stockdale Road.
Okay, because we wanted to buy the property next door, and we were told that we couldn't have, the entrance had to stay where it was at, all the way down. We tried to buy the 30 acres next door. And that kind of stopped us from buying it, because we couldn't move the entrance. So I'd be a little concerned that all of a sudden, these guys get to come in and put a whole bunch of entrances. We were told it's, the road's too dangerous, which it is. We were told it's, the road's too dangerous, which it is. I mean, the motorcycle clubs, the BMW clubs, the Porsche clubs, Corvette clubs, that zip through there on Saturdays and Sundays, it's pretty crazy, it's a dangerous road. But yeah, my main concern is the water. Any construction that happens on those two lots, even that inlet up here, it's gonna affect my property drastically, so I just want that to be a huge consideration.
All right.
So...
Thank you, sir.
I'll leave this right here.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the Robert, would you like to respond to the comments that we just heard? It looks like on the lots, what, 16 and 17, there's some ponds that are going in, or those stormwater detentions?
I'm gonna defer to Art Aiken, the engineer, on the runoff. The first question that Summer had, I'll visit with you after, I wasn't sure what the question was, and then I think, just quickly, the county that we, is it, all right, okay. But yeah, so the runoff.
State's name and address?
Art Aiken, AGC Engineers, 3801 South Beatrice, Independence, Missouri, here representing the Star Properties, or Star Development, I'm sorry. With respect to the runoff off of 17 and 18, with this plat, we are not touching that portion. We're drawing lines there, so there'll be no construction activity, no changing of grades, et cetera. I don't know if the county wants to, when plot plans come in, look at the grading and make sure the builder slash property owner isn't doing significant grade changes that would redirect some of that runoff towards H Highway. I don't see that if I was building that, but never say never on that. With respect to the driveway concerns, as was stated, lot 18 will come off the interior street, lots 17 and 16 will come off of H Highway, but there is some restrictions, and I can't recall exactly how that's stated, but they have to get approval from MoDOT for that location, and I believe 17 has the restriction because of the curve to the southwest, so that may be why on the south side, he was having trouble getting the drive on there because of that horizontal curve. We'll have the same restriction in lot 17 that has to push that northeast.
So are you saying that the lots 16, 17, and 18 are not part of this?
They are, they are part of the plat, but construction-wise, we're not, we're not going over there and constructing anything as far as the development of the plat. So Star Development, once we record the plat, and once we build the streets over off of Stockdale, the two coal sacks, do the water line of Stockdale and into the interior streets and the new detention pond to the north, that's all the construction activity we'll have on this plat, and so we aren't gonna be over there disturbing ground or anything.
Okay, it'll be the individual builders.
It'll be the individual builder, once Star Development sells those lots.
All right, I understand. Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions for the applicant or his engineer? Robert, I think you're gonna follow up with these two individuals after the meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do the, any board members have any other questions for staff? I would call for a motion to approve the final plat of Luciana Point with the conditions attached as are set out in exhibit A.
I'll move to approve.
Very well, could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rodes.
Approve.
And we're doing with conditions, correct?
With conditions, correct, yes.
Terry Griffin.
Approve with conditions.
And Mike Brinkley.
Approve with conditions.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
Last case we'll hear this evening is case number June 22-137A. If we could have a staff's report?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is a proposed revision to the land development code. I'm not gonna take up too much of your time, because I know it's been a long meeting. We always hear these land development codes at two different planning and zoning commission meetings, so it'll give you a month in between to ask staff any questions. If you feel strongly for or against this, please let us know, but this one basically came to us from a citizen wanting to apply for a home occupation. So a home occupation is a, it's a section of code that allows certain businesses to be run out of the home. In this case, it was for a dog training, well, what I would consider a dog training center. It's a, basically where they have folks come in, bring their dogs, and it's, you know, my neighbors need this, teach their dogs some lessons, so they're not barking at me constantly. The way the home occupation code is currently written, there's prohibited uses that just are not allowed as a home occupation. And the way it's currently written, dog training centers fall under animal care or boarding, which is a prohibited home occupation. So our proposal, that I've got on the screen now, is to basically amend the definition of kennel, which deals with animal care and boarding, and to add some language that would allow animal care that takes place entirely inside the home or an accessory building where the animals are not boarded and are not, and are not prohibited, are not prohibited, but must meet all the requirements of the home occupation code and the LDC. So basically, we believe one of the reasons animal care and boarding is prohibited as a home occupation is it has a huge effect on the neighbors. But we feel these dog training classes won't have that effect, because everything is to take place indoors. It limits them to six customers per day, so they can only have six people come per class per day. So we think this is just one of those unintended consequences of adopting the code. So to achieve this, we would add the language in red, and then we would amend the kennel definition and just take out dog training centers. This is a site-specific revision. I would like to do a whole revision at some point, and this only corrects one of the issues, but I think it would be a good change, because I don't think the intended, the code was intended to limit the issues, it was just one of those deals. So that's kind of the short version, be happy to answer any questions we have. I have not met the person that applied for the home occupation, but I believe she's in the audience, so she may have some comments as well, but we're happy to answer any questions the commissioners have.
All right, thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? If the applicants or the potential applicants in the audience, if you'd like to step up and bring us up to speed, state your name and address, please.
My name is Sarah Hurtwig, 14615 Jesse James Farm Road. My thanks to Kip and to Megan Thompson on this. We didn't realize that dog training was lumped in the legal zoning definition along with kenneling when I did the occupancy permit. And just from my background as a professional in the dog industry, for all intents and purposes, there's a huge vast difference between boarding and kenneling versus dog training. And absolutely, kenneling should be in that code, it should be in that as a zoning restriction. As far as what I'm intending to do, and I did in Oklahoma, again, in a residential neighborhood, nobody even knew. So it's just dog owners coming in with their pets, one-hour class, they take them home. Very quiet, very clean, the neighbors never knew. So my thanks, and if you've got any questions for me, be happy to answer them.
I think this looks like it's gonna be decided on at the July meeting, if that's correct.
Yes, we would like it continued to the next meeting, which would be July 5th.
All right, very good. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the case being discussed? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the case before So I'll call for a motion to table the amendment to the 2011 land development code until the July meeting. Have a motion to table, please?
Make the motion to table.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rodes.
Approve.
Terry Griffin.
Approve.
Mike Brinkley.
Approve.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approve.
Motion carries, and please let me know if you have questions on this.
Chip, how do we revise the county code on the minimum setback of a AT&amp;T tower within 120 days? Is it possible?
In less than 120 days?
Yeah.
Well, let me add up, so let's say a case, technically, yesterday was a deadline, but we could still meet a deadline. If a case was submitted yesterday, it would be heard at the July 5th meeting, then the August meeting, which would be 60 days, right? And then it would go to county commission after that, so you'd be pushing, you know, 80 days or 90 days before you got to county commission, and I believe the 120 days probably starts from when they applied. So it would be pushing it, I don't know that it could be done unless county council would say we don't have to hear the revision at two planning and zoning commission meetings. That's been our standard practice, I don't know, I don't think that's code-based, that's just been our standard practice.
It reminded me one more time, what is the minimum?
It's 100% of the height of the tower.
Okay, that's what I thought, right. So this one was 150, I mean, to me, I mean, his house is 300 feet away, I just thought that was just, in my opinion, way too close. I mean, I sure as heck wouldn't want it at my back door.
And I think Andy's gonna shut us down, so...
This isn't even on agenda, I don't think it is.
So call me at the office.
Okay.
My one question would be to the counselors, can planning and zoning commission make an application?
Well, you can make an application...
I'd make one for them?
...with a code, but you're not gonna be able to change the code for putting the application.
Right.
It was applied when it could and said one thing, that's not gonna stand up in court.
Okay, we'll leave it at that, I think. I do have an update, Chairman, if you're on the previous cases. All the July, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, we can't talk about it, because it wasn't, not on the agenda, so go ahead.
We will have a July meeting, obviously, we continued cases there. The previous cases, which include Johnson &amp; Johnson, Bab Acres, Eagleview, and Tillman Farms, all were approved by the county commission, and those are in the process of getting recorded, and that's all I have.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Motion adjourned. Call for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Could I have a roll call vote?
Second.
Marvin Davis.
Approve.
David Rodes.
Approve.
Approve.